Mary, do you need to call the roll on this? I'll just make a note for this. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Is that's working? I'd like to call to order this duly posted work session of the Laconia City Council for the purposes of review of the proposed 2016-17 Laconia School District budget. For the record, I will note that four councilors are present, and so therefore a quorum of the body is established. And I believe Councilor Littman will be along any minute, and Councilor Bowens is unable to attend tonight. So we have an hour, I guess everybody knows that, to conduct business tonight with the understanding that the regular city council meeting has to begin at 7:00 by statute. Okay? So we welcome our guests from the school district. And I see Dr. McCormick is here, and Scott Vachon, who I believe is chairman of the Budget Committee for the school district. And who's going to lead off here? Dr. McCormick.
Good evening, Mayor Engler, Myers, council members. Thank you for giving us the opportunity and time to come before you and discuss the proposed 2016-2017 budget. With the intent of facilitating our discussion and helping put some of our comments in context, we've provided you with a budget document that we hope you did and will continue to find informational and helpful. And if anyone doesn't have one, I brought a couple of extras if you'd care to have one. What I'd like to do initially is go through the document just highlighting what is there. And please, if there are any questions on the contents, please feel free to stop me, although I'm just going to give an overview of the document. And then Mr. Rehman will speak to one part, and then I'll speak to the remaining two parts. Tab 1 contains the financial information, much of which you have probably seen in the past. And as I indicated, Mr. Rehman will be speaking to that as we move through our evening. Tab 2 focuses on special education. Given the financial impact that this program has on the budget, we think time devoted and space devoted to this document would be beneficial, and indeed, hope that you find it to be helpful. The first page simply shows the percentage breakdown of the types of disabilities we experienced this year. You might like to know that our percentage of identified students is approximately five percentage points higher than state average. Page 2 is just a graphic representation of that information. Page 3 and 4 show a breakdown of the number of identified students per school, per grade for 2015 and projected for 2016. And the projections are based on kids we have in the system now. The only exception is, you'll note on the first page of that section, there are 56 students identified for the preschool program, and that's based on a three-year average. Page 5.
Excuse me, they start at three years old.
That is correct. By federal law, we are responsible for special need youngsters starting at that age. Thank you. Page 5 shows the number of students that are currently and those projected to be placed in out-of-district placements. The federal special education law requires that schools try to place students in what's referred to as the least restrictive placement, which basically means their local school. Fortunately, the majority of identified students in our district are provided appropriate programming within our schools. However, there are needs on occasion where we just cannot meet the needs. They're quite significant, and we are required because we can't meet those needs. So the local school no longer becomes the least restrictive because it's not an appropriate placement. But you can see where we are with respect to numbers of out-of-district placement and the respective grade levels for both 15-16 and 16-17. We have five students that the district has placed out of district. However, you'll note that there is an additional 11 that are court placed, for which the district has additional responsibility also. On the next page, just to give you an idea, when we talk out-of-district placement, the range of costs the district would incur for one of those respective placements. And you can see, in some instances, it's pretty significant cost. And that really is determined by the needs of the youngster, how involved they are with whatever the disability may be. And again, I think the fact that we have been able to meet the needs of as many kids as we have in district reflects well on those folks working with this group of youngsters.
Sir?
Yes.
At what point is it that, you know, as far as out-of-district placement, how do you determine that? I mean, what's the criteria of being able to handle them or not? I mean...
Okay. It's, without getting into too much depth, because we're a small district, and if I spoke too much, I think those kids could be identified. So I'm going to be pretty careful but not evasive. Basically, when it gets to the point when either they are receiving no benefit from the program, for example, to retain a youngster in district, if they're not learning, if they're not showing any growth, even with a par educator or a specialist, behavioral specialist, we say, "We're just spending money and we're not getting any results." So that would be one of the criteria. Another would be if their behavior is such that it becomes a danger to themselves or others. That would get us to that point rather quickly. By law, we can only suspend out-of-school a total of 10 days before we would really need to start looking at something probably out of the norm, not during the school day. And that range can vary quite a bit. But it is solely determined by the needs of the youngster and the location, if there is one that's available. We're right now waiting on a placement for a youngster. The good news is, we think we will get through this year, but we're looking, we want to get on the agenda at that site so that the youngster will have a place for next year.
Do they live there? Do they transport them every day?
It can be either. And if you go back to that previous page, you'll see that it says a day program.
Okay.
That means that they are there for the day only. That oftentimes means that we need to provide transportation. And the page I was just referring to with the related cost, you will note, for example, transportation to the Plymouth Elementary Emotionally Disturbed Day Program, transportation is an additional $36,000. So those things can add up rather quickly.
Did you have a question? Let me ask a question. Sure. Just to, sort of deals with the current year budget, but later on our agenda tonight, we have the $180,000 first reading on request to draw on the special fund to support this. Can you, what's in the profile that you included under tab 2 here, how's this differ from typical year? You know, how often do we, the number of children that are in the day program that costs $36,000 to transport, or the residential program, is that's what driving it, or is it other stuff?
That and other things. For example, when we, prior to sending a student out of district and to comply with the least restrictive environment, we will try to provide in-district supports that are less costly than the out-of-district. But that sometimes, too, cannot help. We have, and I, we kept close track from August to December of the numbers of students coming, transferring into the district. And we had, I believe it was, 37% of the students that entered during that timeframe were identified as students with special needs, as opposed to of those who left during that same timeframe, 22%. So there was a net growth there. So we don't know what's coming into us.
Let me try to rephrase my question.
I'm sorry.
So what's laid out on the page of the different examples, is that atypical in terms of, or is it stuff that's below the big-ticket ones that are driving the budget? Or is it a bunch of smaller things that are, you know, where you have to bring in an extra aid or what have you to work with? I'm just trying to get a sense of how the budget's being driven. Is it by a small number of large cases that there's been a big spike in, or is it by a large number of smaller cases?
I think it's some of both, to be honest with you. But if you look at the prices of an out-of-district placement, it only takes one or two when you get to that point that necessitates looking at that $180,000. But I think we have had this year, I don't know if you were in the room when I cited this statistic, were five percentage points higher than the state average. I was told that in the past, we've been more in line with the state average. But I think there has been an increase, and with that increase, proportionally, you'd find more significantly involved students.
So the number of students who are receiving special services is, if I'm paraphrasing you correctly, is abnormally higher than the norm over the last 15 years?
I can't speak, it's higher than what it has been in the recent past, is the best, what I've experienced this year in talking it through, that's what I can say. I don't know if Ed can, when he speaks, can be a little bit, have a better history of that than I, but we did see a pretty significant increase, in my opinion, this year.
I mean, we know that our, that our population of students whose family incomes allow them to participate in the free and reduced price lunch program has doubled in 15 years from historic levels. So I guess what I'm asking is, is the rise in special education students that dramatic also, or is it more on a historical plane?
I think it's steadily been climbing. If I could just get you to turn to the homeless information, I think that sheds a little more light on this type of question. It's the last page in tab 2, and we've given you the five-year history of homeless. Oftentimes, families that find themselves in this unfortunate situation have been in two, three, or more schools. So some of those kids come with needs that we need to meet. An interesting note there, and this is, I believe, abnormally high, you'll note the footnote at the bottom of the page, transportation in and out of district to date costs us $56,000. And that's required, the federal legislation is the McKinney-Vento Act that gives families the choice. For example, we had a family move from a Lakes Region community into Laconia. The parent wanted the children to stay in the school in which they were before they came. The two districts are required to split the transportation cost. We have some children that live two miles from a respective, the respective school in another community, but because they choose to come here, we are required to transport. And that is significantly higher than what it has been in the past. You can see the numbers with respect to homeless. I don't know if that helps Councilor Littman or not, but that's kind of an additional piece of information that we're, situation that we're dealing with this year. Tab 3 just contains demographic data. Page 1 and 2 of this section, pretty much an overview, with the subsequent pages being breakdowns of that data, and in which we show corresponding data, staffing, and projected class sizes. You'll also see at the high school enrollments, what, these are actual enrollments of what the students have already signed up for. And the very back of that section are the Hewitt Career Center numbers this year and proposed, as well as a history, a three-year history. The very last page of the document is the three-year history, and you can see what's happened with that from 493, 471, to 441. And I went through that one quickly because I think Ed is going to give a pretty detailed explanation of the actual budgetary numbers and needs.
Are you all going to address the class size issue in more detail later, or?
We can, once we, if we get through, I want to make sure you have enough time for, and I'd be very happy to try to answer any questions that you have. Anything else? Thank you.
I came in late. I had a question on Medicaid, I don't know if that'd be something you had.
Let me go over the revenues.
Ed?
Good evening. I'll get to, I'll talk about special ed in a few minutes. On one of the sheets, it outlines the amount we're asking for special ed, and I can explain where the changes happened this year. So hopefully, I'll be able to answer that question. So on tab 1, the first document is a document that we've been using for years now. The school board asked me, or authorized me, to submit a budget to this city, the budget numbers that would max out the tax cap. We could see for quite a while now that the tax cap just wasn't going to meet all of the needs that were going to be there this year. So this document was put together, working with the city manager, to get the maximum out of what was available for the current year. So it lists all of our revenues, which was another challenge of the year, is that we had significant revenue reductions, as well as the limit in the tax cap. But about midway down here, we have a summary of appropriations. Those are the three numbers that make up our budget. The general fund, the school lunch program, and then federal projects or special projects, as it's sometime referred to. So we're just shy of a $38 million request for the budget. The last line in the budget here is the amounts to be raised in taxes. That includes both the local tax and the amount to be raised by state property tax. So if you did it, the difference between those two numbers is $410,000, which is the amount that our tax, our share of the tax cap allows to increase. If you go to the next page, page 2, it breaks it down in detail how we came up with this. So the tax cap is almost entirely the new construction, I believe we're working off of a number of $32 million?
Correct.
Correct. So it's almost entirely that, a small, very small amount is related to the Consumer Price Index. Our significant issues this year had to do with the revenues. We've had a reduction in adequate education grant from the state in $455,000. We have a small decrease in our building aid. Our building aid is related to how much we're paying in principle on the bonds that qualified for building aid. So there's a reduction in that, yes?
In terms of the, just so I can confirm what I think it is, but the $450,000 reduction, is that connected to a change in formula, a change in student enrollment, or both?
It's definitely both. Enrollment's been down over the last few years. Definitely a change in the formula. If you remember, last year's legislature changed, there was a component for, I think it was, they called it stabilization. Laconia gets over $1 million in that, in that component, and they were reducing it by, I think it was 5% a year, based on a change in the legislature last year. So there's a, there's a hit in our, amount of our grant based on that. The rest is really about student counts and all.
So what would happen next year, assuming the same enrollment?
Well, the good news is that, and I think you'll see that in some of the enrollment data that we provided, is we see it's fairly stable right now, and actually going to climb slightly over the next four or five years. So I think we've, I think we're over the hump there, and it's just the fact that for four or five years, the legislature had frozen the amounts they were giving grants. And when they transitioned to actually calculating the grants in real time, where they would adjust it for the current amount of students, that's when we, we had a change that was very hard to predict.
So if we had the same number of students next year, it wouldn't go down further?
It might go down a little bit based on further reduction of that stabilization component, but I think that's in the 40,000 to 60,000 range. I don't think it's as significant as we've got hit this year. So building aid, we have a, we have a reduction in the Career Tech Center tuition, a projection of $100,000. I think you'll see in the, in the numbers of the students from sending districts, you'll see where there's a reduction in students there, and that's had a small effect on, on what we're offering, able to offer in the program. So the childcare tuition is a result of, of the elimination of the, of the daycare program at the tech center. It wasn't meeting the needs of the program any longer, and it, as we dug into, what do we do with the program, we realized that the tuition was not covering the cost. The costs were, were, you know, in the 140, 150,000 range, and we had only 65,000 of revenue. We couldn't sustain the program if it didn't have a direct impact or benefit to the Career Tech Center program.
While you're on that, Ed, what are you going to do with that room? I mean, it was constructed, constructed as, you know...
Correct.
... classrooms, I mean, and everything, so...
Yeah, we're proud of the space, and it is a good space for an early childhood education. So we're, we're, we've got a plan of redirecting our resources with our Title I funds to create an expansion of our preschool program that would include typical students going, it's a four-year-old program, where all four-year-olds in the city would be offered an opportunity to come to a half-day program. And we're going to run one of them out of that space, and one of them is currently running out of the Pleasant Street School with some focus Title I funds. So the Medicaid revenue, when our adequate education grant changed this year around, it happens just around tax time, tax setting time, there was a reduction in the current year. We pumped up our Medicaid billing to make sure that we made it through this year without being short on revenue. I've had to adjust that back so that it's more in line with what we typically will bill in a normal year. So there's a reduction there. We're asking for an additional $50,000 out of our trust fund for the health insurance, the health insurance stabilization trust fund. We currently, current year, we've, we've got $50,000 coming out of that fund. Next year, we've asked for $100,000 to come out of that fund. So we're $50,000 increase.
Can you go back to Medicaid?
Okay, sure.
So could you just walk me through that a little bit more, because with further Medicaid coverage available, I think it would be going in the opposite direction.
Sure. So typically, when Medicaid eligible expenses are incurred, we bill for those, for reimbursement. Over the years, we've, we've tried to maximize the amount that we get. We've, at the beginning of this fiscal year, when we added money into our, we billed the entire last year, we got every dime we could out of last year. So for next year, we're going to only have what's, what was available from this year's expenditures to bill. And so based on that projection, even though it's probably more than we normally, we had this backlog that we were managing to make sure that we didn't budget for more revenue than we could generate through that billing cycle. We've, we've maxed that out now, and we needed to be a little more conservative this year in our projection. We will get every dime that we are eligible for, we're aggressive at billing it, but we manage, we'll only bill up to the amount that we budget, and then we'll catch up in the following year.
And special needs cases, do they have Medicaid billing opportunities?
Yes. So hopefully, the, we've got a large increase in Medicaid, in special ed costs this year. So we will be looking at all of those expenditures to see if we can factor out the eligible costs and make sure that we bill for as much as that. So in theory, we should have more eligible costs than we've ever had in, for Medicaid billing, and we will, we'll max that out. We actually hire out the billing service to a company that, that's all they do is school Medicaid billing. So they keep up with all of the changes in the law and make sure that we maximize what our, our bill is. And we pay them a percentage of what they bill, so they have an incentive to bill as much as they can of our eligible costs.
Basically, it's, there's no lag in the current year's budget number? In other words, you had...
There is, there is a lag in that when we're, the costs that we're incurring right now, per se, won't be billed till next fall. So there is a bit of a lag, and that's why it's always a, kind of a fluid number, is because I'm only estimating what we're going to get within that fiscal is because I'm only estimating what we're gonna get within that fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
So back to the trust fund, did I explain that one?
Yes.
Okay. Reimbursement of Wintis Guam Hockey, I guess I should have capitalized Wintis Guam. We've, for the last couple of years, had a shared program, and we were sharing some of the resources, but it, now that it's embedded in our, both of our programs, Wintis Guam stepped up and actually going to, they've budgeted for a contribution to our program to help with the, with the coaches' salaries and stuff, so that we could maintain that program. Because without that, them stepping up in that shared way, we probably would not have been able to maintain a hockey program for next year. So we appreciate them stepping up in that way. So the total changes in revenue are actually a decrease of $683,000. So as you can see, the allowable tax cap at 410, we were already starting out in a hole for this year, $272,000. Then we had to, so we knew we had to cut 272 out of our budget, and then we've had needs that we could anticipate. The salary line is just normal contractual changes in how people are paid on the teacher's contract. We had the bond interest and principal is actually at $20,000 savings. We had health insurance increase of $390,000. It's a 6.2% increase in our premiums, which is pretty good compared to a lot of other school districts and municipalities, and what they were receiving in percentage increase, but it's still a lot of money on almost $5 million worth of premium.
And what does the average family health insurance policy run you?
So?
Different from the city, isn't it?
Yes, we are, we've got our own pool.
Yeah.
So we get rated separately from the city.
Have an average.
We're with the school care. Our plan, a family plan, with no changes from what we're doing now, next year will be $25,000.
Probably so, yeah. Thank you.
We have a two-person is somewhere in the 18,000 range, and it's a little over 9,000 for a single plan. So regular insurance is up 18,000, that's our liability insurance. Bus contract is a two-and-a-half percent increase, 15,000. Special education costs, that's the big number, we've been talking about, $660,000. In the current, current year budget, there are three lines that really make up the bulk of that. Tuition that we pay to other, other schools for kids out of district, it's 200,000 over budget. We budgeted for 450,000, and we're at about 650,000 this year, current year. Then we've, also in, that was to public education entities, we also have some in private schools, which that line's 180,000 overspent. So just in, it's 380,000 just in tuition to other school districts. And then Dr. McCormick mentioned the transportation is over budget by 62,000. Fifty-two of that is just from the homeless population. And then at the high school level, we're same, same accounts, tuition accounts from public schools and non-public schools, almost 120,000. So that's really the bulk of it, and trying to manage that this year has been a challenge.
That kind of answers the question we were asking earlier. It sounds like it's really very special needs that's
Right.
...driving the budget increase.
Right, right. And a lot of those students, we were maintaining in the district. As the school year got going, we couldn't, we couldn't maintain them in the district. We needed to move them out, and simultaneously, we had an influx of students coming in. So we had services in our budget for the students that we were maintaining in district. When they went out of district, we had students coming in that needed many of the same services. We ended up needing to keep our in-district resources to take care of the new students' needs, and these out-of-district placements ended up with no funding. So that's where we were over budget. Is that a better kind of description of where we were with that? Okay. And then our workers' comp insurance is just, we had several cases over the last couple of years, just threw our insurance out of sight in this current year. That and the pools where they had to take their surplus and return it to the districts, they had to do that with workers' comp, as well as liability and health insurance. So that's, that plays a part in our two insurance, workers' comp and our liability insurance So as you can see, a million 143,000 of anticipated needs, plus we're 272,000 in the hole. And we were able to project the savings from some retirees to make up some of that difference. So when all said and done with the math, we're a million and a quarter that we had to cut out of the current year budget in order to meet the tax cap. So we took that challenge on, and I'll show you on the next page how that comes about. But on the bottom, the recap is just how I got, how we got to our 32,234,000 general fund budget that's on the first page. Questions on that? So the next page is our proposed budget, or really it should be proposed cuts in the budget. We spent the last three or four months between administration and the school board, trying to work up a plan that would cut enough money out of the budget to meet the tax cap need, plus have some money available for collective bargaining agreements and other needs of the district that weren't addressed in trying to just maintain the existing, the budget. So this is the list of cuts that we finally arrived at. Nobody wanted to make these cuts. These are cuts that were the least impacting on the majority of students. Many of these cuts have some real direct impact on some students, or like, for instance, the daycare program. We understand there are a small number of students that had a big impact, because there's no program for them next year. But overall, when you're trying to address the needs of 2,000 students, we needed to make a choice. So these are the choices the school board made. And, you know, I'd be glad to go through any one of these cuts and explain, you know, maybe some of the rationale why we made them.
Since it's gotten so much attention in the community, could you explain the, how you save $50,000 by moving elementary band to after?
Sure. So currently, the band program is a full-time teacher during the day.
For all three schools?
And that teacher goes between the three schools. So the students, I think they're mostly fifth graders and maybe some fourth graders, have the opportunity, one-on-one or small groups, to have band during, embedded during their school day. The problem with that plan is that they, if they're in, if they're in with the band teacher in groups of four or five, those five kids are not in an academic program somewhere with the rest of their classmates. It's a pull-out program. So not only is it, do we have to staff that with a full-time person, but the students aren't with their teacher, not getting their academics. So it was important to the, to the elementary staff that we, we moved the, still have band instruction to kids, but to put it at a place where it wouldn't impact their academic program. And the best place to put that was after school. So we eliminate, we had a retirement, Mrs. Gibson at the high school, has been here for many years. So we decided we'd move the band teacher, she's qualified to teach at the high school level, we'd move her to the high school and, to fill the vacancy due to the retirement, and that we would, with the money saved with the, in the full-time position at the elementary level, we would save out $26,000 to provide band instruction after school. And so in essence, save $50,000 in net savings.
So, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Oh, yeah.
I'm trying to understand. It sounds, if I'm understanding you correctly, that this was a education decision as much as it was a financial decision?
Absolutely, both ways.
Okay. Now, would we say that about the, I'm reading between the lines from the letter that Principal McCollum's put in the local papers here a couple of weeks ago. It sounded something similar at the high school level as well, that is, that was an education decision as much as a budget decision.
Correct. So we did not eliminate band at the high school, that was the early rumors. We maintained a full-time staff person for band. We've created a schedule where the band teacher will actually do band after, after school ends, so that from 2:05 to 3:30, we will maintain a band program, much like Londonderry does down south. They're an award-winning band program, and it's all after school. So modeled similar to that, and by taking band out of, when band is in the schedule during the day, students have to choose between band or some other academic program. So, and when we're scheduling things, we can't schedule something that's only offered once during the time that band is offered, because it takes all of band students out of the ability to take that class. So it gets very challenging in when we can fit something into the academic schedule. So we chose to put band outside of the program, outside of the school day, so that we'd have more flexibility, we could do it with maybe less teachers, help in the flexibility of the high school schedule. Does that make sense?
Any other questions from council about any of these cuts? More information on Counsel Hamel?
Is there more that you're gonna go through on?
If you want me to.
Well, what I was curious about is advanced classes, high honor classes, things like that. Has any of those been cut back or reduced, or?
There may be. The problem, the problem you have as your high school population shrinks, you've got a high school of, what, 580 students?
Five sixty.
Five sixty, five eighty. Is you have, have to, you either have to have very small class size to be able to offer all of the different offerings, all the different choices that students would have, or you have to choose to eliminate some things. So we've had to, we've had to look at all of the offerings to see what is beneficial to the most students. So you'll see there's a range, I think in English, I think in tab three, the second, third page. So you see the average class sizes on the bottom half of that page. So you've got a range of six to 28. If you look in the detail, I think there's only one class that's six. So we're trying to maintain a class that has small numbers in it. Most of the higher honor classes, which if you thumb through a few more pages to get to the high school, you will see that, you get to the first one, that's, I guess it's not really labeled high school, but it's just a list, it says foundations, English, and it goes down. You've got honors, English. You've got AP literature down below, that's one of those high-end classes, AP, American Studies. So there are some classes like that, but trying to maintain the class sizes is the key. Okay? And you'll, if you look at the other subjects, you'll find some AP and honors classes in those subjects as well. We've maintained an array of those higher-end classes throughout all the subjects.
Now, are these numbers current enrollments?
They were, they were students that requested back in February when we were putting all this data together.
For next year.
For next year. So by now, they're probably being fit into their schedules, so we're probably further along in the process than this data snapshot. But this is representative of what we had for requests as we were building the budget. So those were the cuts. We, like I said, we went, we went deeper than the million-two that we needed to, but we've got collective bargaining agreements, that we need to bargain in good faith. I think if you look at the last page of this first section, it shows the average teacher salaries for the districts in the area. The first four, the first five or six districts, we've lost teachers to those districts. We've got specific examples that we can't tell you in public, but we've got specific examples of teachers that were working for us that went to, went to all of these districts because they pay significantly more money. And so we've, we're down towards, with third from the bottom of this list of averages. So we do not want to go without a collective bargaining agreement. We need to make sure that we keep pace with these districts, otherwise, we're just gonna keep losing more and more.
Are you including all the subs and hourly and part-timers in your figures to get that average?
No.
Or are you using full-time?
No, these are, these are full-time positions in each of these districts. This is data that's put together by the Department of Ed. This is a, this come, these numbers came directly off a report on the Department of Ed website.
And I know comparing salaries is not a, easy to do on a
No. That's why we went to the website, because at least it's independent data.
But I guess, I guess what we would be looking for, or something I would be looking for, a better understanding of, is, and it could vary significantly based on how many veteran teachers one district has, if you're comparing average salaries, as opposed to the salary scales. That could depend a lot on
Absolutely.
How many new teachers you have versus how many teachers have been there forever. So I guess, I guess what would be helpful at some point in time would have a better understanding of how our scale compares to comparable districts.
So an example of how we've kind of lost that competitive edge in the contract, we had three or four years, the city went through it, as well as the school district, of holding a line on salary increases for employees. We had some years that we agreed to zero increases, no steps. I think we had four years like that. Well, a teacher on step four or five in our school district, because they were there for, they should be on step eight, but they're on step four. for, they should be on step eight, but they're on step four in our school district, they can go to Plymouth, for an example, and this is a real situation, and get step eight on a, on a salary schedule that's, that's higher than ours, and make $19,000 a year more. And so, that's where we lose the competitive edge of being able to keep good quality teachers. They can, they can go to other districts and get placed properly on their schedule.
Ed?
Counsel Hamill?
Ed, do you still do the stipends and, and the insurance programs for the employees to help pay the cost of the medical bills?
Well, our, our stipend's a little different than the city's in that ours is embedded in our health program, so when we say the family plan costs $25,000, that includes a $2,000 piece, it's called the choice fund. It's built into the program to help, help pay, it's as similar as, as the health savings account, but it's built into our insurance program to help pay the, the deductible and the coinsurance that an employee has to pay.
Is, have you noticed any savings, I mean, any, do they use 100% of that usually?
No, what happens is, they understand it as time, as they got used to using it, and that money, if they don't use it, rolls over into future years, so that it's available for them.
Increase? In other words, if you give them two-
Right.
-and it rolls over to four?
Yeah, we give them two, they use a thousand, a thousand rolls over to the next year, we, and the program gives them two more in their account. So, then they end up with three. So, that, in any one year, if they had surgery, you know, $50,000 surgery, that choice fund would pay most of their deductible and out-of-pocket costs.
Does it roll over year to year?
Yes.
In definite time, as long as they're employed?
Well, we've only had it for two years. I'm not, I, I don't recall if there's a, a cap. I don't think there's a cap.
And if they leave, that's, doesn't it go?
It stays with the, with us in the insurance and helps reduce our future costs.
Okay. Is there, if that's not, well, you say it's being rolled over, so it wouldn't matter. Okay. Thank you, Ed.
Okay.
Counsel Edman?
So, just in terms of the rollover and how you budget for it, could you tell, describe that process?
Because it's all built into our health plan, we just pay the premium. We pay the $25,000, and they just keep, they report to us a, a lot of the activity, but we don't really control it.
Have you thought of self-funding that?
We have, we've been there before, years ago.
Not self-funding insurance, but self-funding the-
Yeah.
-HRA component?
Yeah, we did that exact thing 15 years ago, 18 years ago, we, we were doing that with a similar kind of plan. It has, it's good points of potentially saving, but also has the chance of paying out more. It's kind of, we take on a bit of risk when we do that. The good thing is the way our insurance is, is, is rated, any savings in that come back into our, our premiums. Because, because it's really a self-funded pool, as it is, it's not like we're buying it from Cigna, Cigna's just operating it. We're, we're, we're self-funded basically through the school care pool.
One question that I would ask, and it may not be, we're running out of time tonight, but I'm sure that we'll have further discussions on this. We're a couple of months out from actually approving a budget for next year at this point in time. Just so you all will know, we're, we're on a timetable to vote on the budget at our first meeting in July, with the understanding that we can go as late as a second meeting in July and still meet statutory requirements. So, we've got a lot of time, relatively speaking. So, anyway, question is, a lot of the cuts that are outlined on this page, I think that we're all interested in, are, are cuts, one would assume, there are some significant administrator cuts, but there are also a number of, of classroom cuts as well. So, I guess the question would be, and you all haven't volunteered this information tonight, that I would be interested at some point would be a, a evaluation, if you will, of the significance of those classroom cuts in particular, in terms of, of, are there alarm bells going off in terms of, have we, have we crossed, are these, are these safely done in terms of class sizes, or is there a particular area where we're starting to tread in a dangerous area in terms of class? So, we'd be looking, I'd be looking for your opinion on that, as to, the, the school district's opinion, as to-
Okay.
-as to the significance of these-
We're writing down the questions.
-these cuts in terms of how they affect class sizes. Counsel Hamill?
I got one more question, Ed, onto the Hewitt Center.
Yes.
I notice probably, since 2013, it's gone down about 50 kids, but I noticed Belmont is, is between 14 and 15, is substantially reduced, their kids, sending kids, I guess, right? You know, some have gone up, some have gone down. Is there any, you have any idea why Belmont is cut back about half?
Belmont, and I think Franklin is, is a bit of the same type of thing.
Yeah.
It's really a direct result from the state not fully funding their portion of the, of the costs. The state promised in their legislature that they would, legislation, that they would pay 75% of the cost of the career technical centers across the state. About four or five years ago, they, in a budget-cutting move, they, they stopped funding or keeping up with the increases in, in the, the program. So, now they pay about 60% of the 75% they're supposed to fund. So, as a, as a receiving district, we have no choice, but it's not, it's not our money, it's the sending district's money, so we have no choice but to bill the sending district for the difference that the state didn't pay. When we do that, they were getting hit with bills after the year-end of hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in tuition. So, they made a strategic decision for their budget to limit the number of students that they would send.
So, so the state went from 75% down to 65?
No, they went from, they, they went, they still calculate the 75%, but then they only fund it 60% of the 75%.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Cut them out.
Okay. It's a math problem, it's about half of what they-
Half, roughly?
Yeah.
Of what they was, half of the 75?
Well, 60% of 75%, so they're paying like half, half of what, what the, the cost is.
Okay.
Okay, we need to cut it there, if we could.
All right.
Thank you all for a very informative presentation, and we'll talk again.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're going to roll right into our-